All right, let's go ahead and call it a water, please. All right, first item up on the agenda is the approval of the board minutes from December meeting.
That we have approved the board minutes from previous meeting?
Okay, any, any other questions or further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. All right, next up, we have our support group update, so we'll start off with PTO society, I believe you're on the line.
Hello, how are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Wow, I will begin with the treasure report as of December 31st, 21, we are six months into the fiscal year. We finished the month with year-to-date results of 69,800 adjusted. The lunch program brought in a net profit of 74,000. They continue to be the primary driver of our income and without them, we would not be able to fund all the programs that the PTO is undertaking. Their current focus is on volunteer staffing to distribute lunches. Spiritware store brought in 15,000 in sales year-to-date. This is sales, not net profit. Of that amount, 6,800 came from the December all-day sale alone. Well done, Spiritware team. They plan to run another live sell at the January 28th basketball game with the cheer kitty campers. The PTO collected 255 individual donations to the gift of the season program, ranging from $5 to $400 for a total of $17,075. We wanted our staff to enjoy every dollar of those generous donations, so the PTO supplemented the program with $1,728 to cover the PayPal transaction fees and round up the gift card balance, which resulted in all staff members receiving $100 target gift card. We want to thank our families for their incredible generosity. We would also like to express a huge thank you to Mara Barnes and her little elves who packed and distributed 175 gift bags on all three campuses. Finally, we have approved approximately $14,500 in PTO funding requests from the three campuses and will be distributing checks to the principals soon. So, high school just held their coffee chat this past Tuesday. Middle school will hold theirs, their next monthly coffee chat on the 18th, and I believe the elementary school will hold theirs the following week. Our next teacher and staff appreciation luncheon is scheduled for the Friday before Super Bowl, which falls on February 11th. We plan to re-engage our LNC families by inviting them to sign up and prepare homemade soups, chili, and other goodies. We think it would be fun if we ask LNC invite LNC teachers, staff, and students to wear their favorite football team jersey or team spirit wear on that Friday, regardless of who's in the Super Bowl. Next, I have Rachel Bernard is our new PTO communications chair that was previously held by Tina Thompson. One of the responsibilities of this position is updating the PTO page on the LNC website. It will also involve updating the PTO's school G page, updating PTO, let's see, GroupMe, and finally gathering communication from all PTO committees. Last but not least, Candace Williams's younger child is a senior this year. So this will be her last year as high school PTO president. My son is also a senior and my daughter is, this is her last year of middle school, and so this will also be my last year as PTO president. Finally, Nicole Burton has had to make the difficult decision to resign from the elementary PTO president position effective immediately. We do, we have found presidents for the elementary school and middle school next year and hope to have the high school PTO president confirmed in a few weeks. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to report this evening. That's all.
All right, thank you Heidi and Nicole, if by chance you're listening, I hope you and your family are doing well. Thank you for your service in the past and just all your contributions. All right, next up, we will move over to Athletic Booster. Mr. Smith, you're taking that one this evening?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Borg. Good evening to anybody who may be listening online. I'll be here representing Matt Schlegel Athletics. Start with middle school. As you came in, you probably saw that we had a packed parking lot because we had a middle school basketball game going on there, getting ready to conclude their winter season successfully and healthily, healthy. High school, this has been a unique week for Lake Norman Charter. We have been faced with the same challenges that, as you are all aware, that our community is facing, and as the Safe Schools Committee later will also be sharing some data. Athletics is not immune to that, so unfortunately, we've been faced with some challenges that are, for the first time, and I want to put this in perspective, you know, we've been operational within COVID in two calendar years, or two academic years, and for the first time in those two years, we were faced with a situation where we had to cancel or postpone an athletic event because of something on our side. So unfortunately, we were in a situation that both of our boys and girls varsity basketball teams, and truly out of an abundance of caution, we canceled, or I'm sorry, we postponed our basketball games to be at Huff that were going to be on Tuesday and maintaining communication with Northwest Cabarrus, who were scheduled to play tomorrow night. Again, out of an abundance of caution, we are rescheduling those games as well. Again, it's, it is a reflection of our folks within the community doing the right thing and following the protocol that we ask where, you know, they communicate with us. In addition, if a student isn't feeling well, they stay home. Basketball practice will always be there. These games will be there, so taking care of ourselves, taking care of our households is paramount, so we appreciate our families for doing the right thing, and we ask that our folks, athletics and throughout the schools, continue to make those smart decisions so that we can all take care of ourselves. But those, our intention is to resume basketball activities Monday, and I will answer any questions that you may have in regards to athletics. Oh, and I don't want to overlook, our swim team is operational and they have had some very strong success within the conference. Obviously, swimming is very different than basketball because you can have maybe a couple of students out and still be able to compete, so we have been able to successfully continue our swim meets. They had a swim meet at the South Rowan YMCA, I think Wednesday, and they were very successful there, so I will answer any questions you may have.
I just have one. So what are the criteria that we're using to make those decisions?
Absolutely. So in collaboration with Matt Schlegel, myself, and both head basketball coaches, we look at a number. We have to make sure that we have an appropriate number. We have an established number internally, and that is something that is equitable with both the women's and the men's, and if we recognize that we do not have the available number of players, then that dictates if we are able to practice and or play.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, next up, we have the school and state update. This is Stein.
Thank you very much. Brief report tonight. First of all, I want to give a shout out to Christine Casillas, one of our high school counselors and Dr. Danielle Graham, who is the mental health professional that we have paired with Novant Health. They had held a mental health and family support virtual session for grades seven through 12 earlier this year, and I believe that was in October, and now they're going to be hosting one January 25th for grades K through six. And what's nice about that is it is a Zoom meeting, gives lots of opportunity for parents to engage, to learn, and to ask questions. So excited to see that partnership and how they're serving our families. Also, I want to point out that we have a really great partnership with CPCC, as Mr. Smith would, would, I'm sure shake his head. Lots of students who are getting college credit and getting college experience for, and there's an informational session on February 11th. And I think one of the things, we encourage any family who's in the high school age that if they don't, if they're thinking their kiddo might want to take advantage of that, come to the informational session, because oftentimes where kids miss the opportunity is they don't understand the process, and the process is set up, it's, it's a little lengthy. It's just like applying for college and getting in and following those things, and if they don't follow those, there's really nothing we can do at this level, but you miss an opportunity that would be great and very much on point and on mission. So the high school again is going to, counselors are hosting a session on February 11th. I also want to give out a specific shout out to one of our juniors, Garson Long. Garson has taken upon himself as his own leadership to form a eighth-grade mentorship and transition program. He has worked with other students and currently he has 23 other students who've signed up to be mentors. They're exploring an end-of-the-year event with the eighth-grade team, and as Garson was working with one of our counselors here and Dr. Graham, he was trying to explain that when he was a freshman, he had a lot of questions, and while the school did a good job with transition and those things, sometimes student-student is really beneficial, and then to have somebody that is a friendly face in the high school is also really important. So a great example of somebody who saw a need and recognized that and has implemented something moving forward, so that's going to be kicking off. We have been, and this is sort of tied to safe schools, but we have been very closely tracking absences, our rates, and I, as Mr. Smith said, our families are doing the right thing, and it is helping us to maintain operations. That's obviously our number one thing is to safely maintain operations. We've been able to do so. A huge shout out to our building principals and all the work that they've done, working with their staff to try to secure subs if people have to be out because maybe if their kiddo has something in a daycare, maybe they've had an exposure, and our staff has worked really hard on their own to try to find coverage. So it's been a very collective effort and a lot of people doing some creative things and teachers covering for teachers and admin helping to cover. So just really proud of everybody's effort, and hopefully this is something that is a short-run situation because we recognize already the amount of work on both our teachers and our administrative team this year. But they're, they've risen to the challenge, so we, in looking at student absences, I asked all the registrars to look at yesterday, just so that we could kind of have a quantitative number. At the elementary school, we had roughly 10% of our population gone for students. We had 8% at the middle school, and we had almost 25% of our high school. And again, I think, you know, high school kids are more active, they're interacting more, they're involved in sports, and they're pretty self-sufficient, and I think parents will oftentimes go on the, the side of caution to say, well, can you do this at home and can you get things done? And so they've taken advantage of that. And staff members, as we've talked about before, the number, well, one of, it's right up there, maybe it's not the number one limiting factor, but it's definitely one of the top limiting factors, and that's the number of substitute teachers. Because, you know, they're, like I said, we, we need to run normal operations. We need to do it in some way that there's fidelity. You know, this isn't just about having kids come to school and housing them, and, you know, it's really about making sure that curriculum is moving forward. And so, so far, we've been able to do that. We have a good substitute pool, but we are about as stretched as we can be. So it's something that we're very much monitoring and will adjust as needed. A little bit of good news to end with, we, this week in the lottery, our lottery is about to end. It will end on January 31st, and compared year-over-year, we are up 883 applications by compare last year at this time to this year at this time. So we're tracking strong for our lottery, and that is all I have.
Miss Stein, quick question regarding staff. I think we're limited by state reg from going remote. So if we do run into a staff shortage, what would our options be?
So we are limited by state regulations to go remotely by choice. You, you can go remotely by need, and, and we can do that by classroom, we can do that by building, and, you know, we would obviously do it with the lowest impact possible. And a good example is earlier this year, we did have to go remote with a fourth-grade classroom where we saw some internal spread that worked very well. We did not see that in other areas. So we, we can by need, but not, not by just choice. And, you know, certainly if we needed to, we, we would, but we would look at how we would minimize impact and, you know, try to make some choices about where you shift subs to, what, what the greatest number of need is. So it's something that we're talking about a lot, and I will say, as an admin team, we met earlier this week and we talked about, you know, what's sort of our tier-one approach to coverage, what's our tier-two approach? And, you know, we're literally talking about healthy bodies helping to cover. Maybe they're not going to cover a classroom, but they can cover a recess duty or a lunch to free up somebody with more experience for classrooms. And then how we can work collaboratively amongst all three buildings, which I think our principals do a really good job of. So we've talked about every strategy and lever we can pull, but, you know, I can't predict exactly what that is, but I do think it's important for our families to know. We recognize how important it is to try to keep, maintain as, as normal of operations as we possibly can, and that is what we're striving for, but there may be things that are outside of our control.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stein. So next, we will move over to our financial update, and we will start with our 2020-2021 audit review. Mr. Smith?
Hopefully, I got the mic working. Okay, so appreciate it. Hopefully, everyone on the board, you have a little, just a handout, kind of a board presentation handout. I'm just going to kind of go over some of the highlights from the audit. First page there, sorry all the noise. First of all, as, as Rick mentioned, my name is Eric Smith. I'm an auditor with Pottery and Company. We certainly appreciate the board giving us the opportunity to work with Lake Norman Charter School again this year for the audit. We certainly appreciate that. Thank you to Shannon and Haley and all their staff here for when we came out for our field work for the audit, were very helpful, and that helps make the process go smoothly, so we certainly appreciate that. On the first page, I was just hit a couple of highlights. So this first paragraph is a report on the financial statements. So our audit report can be found on page five of your audited financial statements, which we have copies here for you. We've issued an unmodified audit report on the basic financial statements for Lake Norman Charter School for the year ended June 30, 2021. An unmodified report is the highest level of assurance that certified public accounting firm can give you that these statements are financial, these financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects that the financial position of Lake Norman Charter School. So I like to remind boards that when we come out, we don't, certainly don't test every transaction that went on through the year, but we assess risk, we send out confirmations, and we've done that to assure that these financial statements are materially correct. Second paragraph, we talk about our compliance reports, because you guys receive over $500,000 of state funding, we're required to do a state compliance audit. So the compliance reports can be found starting on page 56 of your audited financial statements all the way through page 64. So in addition to our independent auditors report, we've also issued a group of reports for Lake Norman Charter School's compliance with governmental auditing standards and the compliance for its major state program with various laws and regulations. In these reports, we've communicated that we found no instances of material non-compliance, question cause, material weakness, or reportable conditions in connection with the applicable statutes and regulations. So that's an unmodified report for those good, clean audit reports. So this next page, kind of just giving a highlight for the financials for the year, and I'll kind of go through just some of them. So this is our statement and net position comparing June 30 of 21 to June 30 of 20. You'll see at the end of June 30, 21, you finished with about 9.3 million in cash, and this was our first year. We moved some investments over, so you have about $2 million in investments, so those combined are about a million five up from last year. Do from other governments is 110,000. That's down about 600,000. That's just the timing of when you get your local funding. Restricted bond funds of 2.5 million. This is where you hold your debt service reserve fund and your bond payments. Go down to the last one there, our capital assets of 42.7 million. This is your building, all your computers, all your equipment included in here. For the very last line, so your third, outflows of resources of pension and OPEB, that all relates to your state pension plan. We have total assets and deferred outflows of resources of 64.5 million for the end of June. The next page goes through our liabilities. You see, we have our accounts payable accrued expenses, 257,000, accrued salaries of 722,000. Our PPP loan that we had last year was forgiven this year, so that went off the books. Our net OPEB and pension liability relate to the state pension plan, so that's essentially Lake Norman's sliver of the entire state pension plan. Do within one year and do within more than one year, 38.9 million. This relates to your bond debt and your compensated absences. And then we have deferred inflows of resources of 8.3 million. We have our total liabilities and fund balance the same as our assets of 64.5. For the next page we looked at, goes through our statement of activity, so if you were a for-profit entity, this would be your income statement. So those first five columns there are just how you keep your books throughout the year to get to your modified accrual of accounting. Now, touch on the last two columns, we have our full accrual at 630, 21, and 20. So you'll see we finished the year of June 30, 21, at 25.1 million in revenue compared to last year of 22.2. That's about a 2.8 million dollar increase. We look at our expenditures, including instructional services, support services, and our debt out, or debt interest expense. We had a 23.4, 23.4 million this year in expenses compared to about 23.3 last year. So good job of keeping expenses down in a, in a COVID year. But we take our revenues, less our expenses, you'll see that we had a change in fund balance on the full accrual of 1.6, 1,654,971 for the year. Certainly answer any questions. It was a good year for the school. Certainly appreciate opportunity to go over that tonight.
Hey Eric, I just have a question in regards to the capital assets, and it looks like in the end of June in 2020, our capital assets were 43.1, and then it went to 42.7. I would, I feel like it would go up, but...
So a couple of things factor into that. You have, you did have additions this year. We look on the last page toward the bottom, you see you have 1.8 million of additions, but you have $2.2 million of depreciation. That's just the normal depreciation. This year depreciation was more than an addition, so it made the entire asset class come down.
Awesome. Thank you. That makes sense, and just for the board's benefit, a lot of times when people hear auditors, they probably are not super excited, but Eric has been extremely helpful over the years in, really with DPI and sometimes understanding stuff. There's been several times where Haley and I have had to call him more as, help us to understand what DPI is looking for and what this means, and so he's actually been quite a resource for us, so we, we have a very good, good thought for Eric in that process.
All right, any questions on the audit from the board? All right, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, still sticking with the financial world, we will review budget amendment number three. Ms. Benford, are you covering that?
I am.
All right.
Okay, so first off, I just want to let you guys know that Haley asked that I just thank you all for understanding that she couldn't be here tonight. But as we go through this, you'll see she did all the work that we need so that we can understand, hopefully. And I'll try to answer questions, but if I need to ask her, then I'll have to follow up. All right, so we can jump to the first slide. So there are several things moving parts, just like the last, just like last month that we, as we reviewed. The first one is that the state per pupil allotment, that increased 3.7% over last year, and we budgeted for 1.5. So that's the first change in, in this new budget amendment. And then the state EC per pupil allotment, that increased 5.5%, and we only allotted 1.5 in the, in the last budget. The local per pupil allotment increased 3%, and we budgeted 1%. So all of these allocations that we're receiving, we're finding out are obviously higher than what we anticipated, and I think probably by design, we are a little bit more conservative. Also, I just want to point out that we did talk a little bit about the local one in December. So that's just there as a reference, but we, we knew some of that in our last conversation. All right, so expenditures. We have a 2, 2.5% average salary increase for all staff and applicable taxes in retirement. The salary schedule staff are receiving their step and a 1.3% increase to their salary schedule. The step was awarded in December, and the 1.3 will come in February. The non-salary schedule staff will see a 2.5% increase. Counselors are getting $100 stipend, $100 per month stipend, so $1,000 annually for their 10-month contracts, and we have six, six counselors. And then for retirement, we're seeing an increase to 22.89% in healthcare increases to $7,019. Those were also touched on a bit last month. She said that if we need to see prior rates, she can provide them when she returns. And then, and then she has this beautiful chart that's showing us the substitute daily rate increase. And so, uncertified teachers, you can see what the current rate is in the, in the top part of the chart, in the top chart, I should say. So the standard daily rate is $72 currently for uncertified teacher, and, and then that's increasing to $88. And the standard hourly was nine, now it's increasing to 11. That's the proposal. That's what we're voting on. The long-term hourly rate or daily rate was 81, and that's increasing to 114.40. That hourly rate is going from $10.13 to $14.30. She's also provided us what these represent in terms of percentages as a reference. And then for certified teachers, we've got the $97.20 is the current, is the current, and it's increasing to 112, or $12 an hour is increasing, $12.15 an hour is increasing to 14. And then the long-term for certified teachers is going from 105 for a daily rate to 145.60 for the daily rate, or $13.13 hourly to $18.20 hourly. Those rates are effective February 1st pending our approval of this budget. So any questions before we go to the next page?
Quick question. Do you know how those compare to other local schools? Is that right?
I do. I'm not, we're still just a little bit under. We're over all the other charters, but we're under CMS. But we have been, I think our substitute pool has been more robust than CMS, and we're very fortunate. A lot of times, parents who are available and because of just the conditions of working at Lake Norman Charter, we've been able to draw some helps as well.
It is, I was going to ask a similar question. Is the pay increase for substitutes, is that designed to increase the size of the pool? Is that also an incentive, or what's, what's kind of the driving force behind that?
Staying competitive. So we want to, yeah, it's staying competitive. You know, you can talk about conditions and people love how great our teachers leave, lesson plans... You know, you can talk about conditions and people love how great our teachers leave lesson plans and how respectful our kids are, but that'll only carry you so far. So it's a balance between all of that. I do think that the incentive Jared was when we put in the bonuses for the subs for each semester this year for subs who gave so many hours and subs who were long-term subs. We put in some bonuses to try to do more on the attracting side.
Okay, so then we have state bonuses. And so the PRC 141, this is, this impacts everyone as of December 1st. All staff except for most of our staff, I should say, qualified for that one. So that one is the state fiscal recovery funds premium payment bonus. It's a thousand for all employees that were on board as of December 1st. It's an additional 500 for employees whose salary is less than 75,000. This one has to be paid no later than January 31st. And so the school is planning to pay it in the January 27 paycheck. The total cost for this bonus is 277,000. We've so far received 184,000 and we've submitted our employee report to the state and are expecting to receive the difference. The next one is the PRC 203 S R 3 premium pay bonus. This one is a thousand dollars for every qualifying teacher and instructional support personnel who participated in COVID-19 training. Sidebar, all of our staff participated in COVID-19 training. So that was between March of 2020 and January, this January 1st of this year, but all of our staff did that. So we have 128 eligible teachers who qualify and instructional support qualify. But we only received funding for 113. The state is not going to guarantee that we're getting additional funds to cover the shortfall. We're looking to amend though our S R 3 grant to cover all employees so that it's not, so that we cover the balance of the 113 that, you know, that the state is already covering. But also the rest of our staff that don't, that aren't included in that language for the, for the bonus. So we're looking to use the S R grant to cover everyone else. We've told that, we've been told that this is an allowable expense. So that additional amendment would be about $60,000. This one also has to be paid by January 31st. So it will be paid in the January 27th. And then finally, the PRC 36 teacher legislative bonus, this is $300 for every qualifying teacher at, as of January 1st, 2020, employed as of January 1st. Teacher and instructional support. This funding was provided in our base budget allotment. And it's the same bonus that we, that was issued last year is 47,000. We would like to fund an additional 11,000 from local funds to be able to provide this also to all staff members. And this also has to be paid by January 31st. So it's going to be included on January 27th as well. None of these bonus are subject to state retirement. They are all covered by, they are all subjects of FICA though. Just as a sidebar. So any questions about this one?
Nicole, do we as a board have to vote on moving forward with those bonuses?
Yes. And when we get there, there's, we have to vote.
And when, and for the PRC 203, we would go ahead and pay those out. Not necessarily knowing that the state's going to cover it or we're going to go ahead and do that.
Right. I, I would say that the risk for that is very low. Haley and I will rewrite the grant and since they've already indicated it's an allowable expense and several other schools have utilized that, I think we're going to be fine. But you're right, there is a slight risk, but it is, it is slight compared to some of the other things that we may not be able to count on the state to go back. And the highlighted one, just to be clear. In the state's wisdom, they talk, they literally say it's qualifying teachers and instructional support. We include our TAs in that. The state does not consider them instructional support. If I ask my principals whether they're instructional support, they're going to most certainly tell you that that is what they do and it's unfair. And that's why we are, yeah, we're trying to advocate for our TAs for what they do.
So what, I'm curious, just what is considered instructional support then?
They did include things like media specialists and some of those positions, but they did not include TAs. And quite honestly, we told our TAs because again, in the name instructional support staff, you would think it is inherent. But even if it wouldn't have been, we, they play a critical role in what we do day-to-day. And to offset that by 11 grand to be able to honor that, I think is really important.
So any other questions before we move on from this page? All right. So this is just the numbers that represent all those different changes. So you can see that the state revenues are, the state revenues are the bulk of the total revenue increase at almost 672,000 and federal revenues are 124,000. Overall, this is mostly those state allotment differences, those percentages that I mentioned on the first slide that we had assumed originally compared to what we ended up receiving per student. We also have state funds and forfeiture revenue in here, state and federal staff bonuses and the EC federal revenue adjustment as well. Then on the expenditure side, you can see overall our expenses are increasing by 746,000. This is primarily the salary increases. So you can see the bulk, 640,000 of that is salaries and bonuses. So this is the salary increases for all staff. In addition to the step that was, the step increase that was included in December. This is state and federal staff bonuses, this is the substitute rate increase. The applicable taxes associated with those. I, I double checked when I was talking to her. I said, do you list these in significance order? And they are listed as significance order. So the further down we get, the smaller impact they are. But adjustment to the actual retirement and healthcare premiums. EC supplies, which is offset by revenue and an increase in, to the custodial contract for custodial salary increases. So our vendor, we're increasing what we're paying our vendor so that that staff can also see an increase. Overall, this is a net surplus of 48, just over 48,000. This does include 595,000 in non-recurring dollars. That would not be included in normal operating, in our normal operating budget. So that includes capital campaign donations, the CMS sureup. Remember a couple, it might've been December or November. I don't remember. We found, we got that CMS sureup and then the Charlotte water reimbursement. And so any questions on that before we motion?
Just real quick, and you may not know, but for the substitute step up, like for budgeting purposes, is it an estimate based on where we've been historically? Does that help the number was?
Yes, that's, that's what we look at. We look at, and, and it's a little bit of a magical sauce because it's pre-COVID and during COVID, but, but her projections are pretty good and have been in the past.
Any other questions? Do we do this before we vote or should we?
We can, I, I think we can talk about future funding and then we have to, as you can see, it's listed as the budget amendment and the state bonus approval. Those are mandatory votes. So we have to take them separately.
All right. So future funding considerations. We have to plan for salary increases for our staff for the upcoming fiscal year. We have to plan for increased retirement and health premium cost. She points out that our grant is going to run out for nurse and niece, but we have to consider absorbing that cost once the grant is exhausted. I know she, she was very valuable to me personally with my sick kid over there. And then we want to remain competitive with our substitute daily rate of pay. So in terms of any questions that may need, that we may need to direct or any followers from Haley, she is back next week. But any questions before? I'm probably ready. I mean, you can't, it's, it's just the way things happen, right?
I just have one question, Nicole. So when we talk about future funding considerations, are those bottom three potential funding considerations for this fiscal year or are they for next fiscal?
For next fiscal year.
Thank you.
I think she's just trying to give a preview of here are some things that might be a little bit different as we're getting ready to go through the budgeting process for the upcoming school year.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, it's all next year.
Got it. Thank you. All right. So we have two motions that we need to approve is the budget. One is the state bonus approval. Is that correct?
Specific language. So so, so can we do the simple one first? Okay. So the first one is just motion to approve budget amendment number three.
This is Amy. I motion to approve budget amendment number three. This is General Second.
All right. Any other questions? Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
So Ms. Benford, for the second one, if you could just read it nice and slowly so Ms. Skyer can get it because it's very important for for her to capture it accurately that so in case of auditing, we have it exactly right.
Okay. I can also maybe copy and paste into an email for your, for you to check it. But, or I mean, it's just, I, I made it pretty big font and it goes to the second page. So it's probably not that big a deal. But okay, the board, the board approves the payment of all state bonuses. This includes the S R 3 fun premium pay bonus payable to qualifying teachers who participated. Who participated in one or more trainings between March 12th, 2020 and January 1st, 2022. That addressed the mitigation of COVID-19 in public schools, learning loss resulting from COVID-19 pandemic. Or virtual instruction needed because of COVID-19 pandemic.
This is Greg. Second.
Greg, I'm going to need you to repeat that motion.
And we'll hand it over to you.
All right. Any questions or further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. Thank you. I think that is it for the finance update. Next, we will move on to the committee updates and we'll start with safe schools. So Ms. Carr, are you reading that one off?
I am. This one is going to be a fun one. So hopefully none of it will be a surprise to anybody because I think you can't watch the evening news, the morning news or the afternoon news without hearing about what's going on in COVID land. And just on a sidebar, we are actually adjusting this presentation 15 minutes before this meeting because there has even been some stuff going on today that we wanted to make sure that we covered. So bear with us, our printed copies are going to look slightly different than the overhead copies. So if we could just kind of not reference the printed copies for right now and we'll kind of go through what's been going on. So I'm going to let Ms. Stein start with kind of high level, what's been going on in the world legislatively.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm going to start by also saying, especially since we have some participants joining us and some will watch this on YouTube. We are going to send a communication out to our families that contains this information along with some other highlights from the board meeting tonight. So this updated one will go out to our, our families tomorrow for their review. So as, as Ms. Carr referenced, the Omicron variant has shown to spread very quickly. Not sure we emphasized very as much as we could, especially with holiday travel. When we came back from the holiday break, a lot of changes had happened. The CDC had changed the recommendations for the quarantine length of both infected and exposed individuals. Subsequently, the NCDHHS also changed the safe schools toolkit to mirror those recommendations. We met with every staff in every building to discuss what those changes were. Reminders of best practice and a recommitment to just doing those best practices. And I will say kudos to both them and to the students who, when, when we've been around, people were getting tired of mask wearing, as you can imagine. But I think that they certainly seem to understand and at least have been respectful to continue to mask. And when we see the, the case numbers, you can understand what that would do for exposure had they not been wearing masks properly. Notably, the quarantine length has been shortened to five days for both infected and exposed individuals, exposed and vaccinated folks. And if you're 18 and over, you also have to have a booster. There is no quarantine from school. If you're exposed and vaccinated and have your booster for 18 and older, no quarantine from school. So again, that is a huge piece of keeping people in regular in regular instruction. And I will say this is super simplified because as Mr. Smith will tell you, he had, he had three students in the office and they all had gotten their shots at different times and had, you know, some had boosters, some didn't. It is literally like a flow chart. It was like whoop, 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 whoop. And so thank goodness, Ms. Shipman is the living, breathing flow chart interpreter and can give guidance when it comes to what is needed. The FDA and CDC has approved the booster shots for students 12 years old and up. Originally, when the guidance came out after break, they were going to require students 12 years old enough to have the booster to not be exposed. But they have since changed it to 18 years and older. So that affects maybe some seniors, a few, but mostly our staff. There is a high demand for testing, which has led to difficulty in finding appointments. L and C still has tests available for staff and students, but the state has limited supply. We're on our last breath for tests. I mean, we're on our last breath for tests. The state has committed to us two different times of when tests will come. They have not come. Emails that were not consistent with those. So, and I've talked to other charter schools that are in the same boat. We have actually borrowed tests from another charter school. We're not going to be able to borrow again. We are on our last leg. So if we don't get them here by probably after MLK Day, we are going to have to, we'll be in a position where we're not able to test, which is unfortunate, but that, that is a limiting factor that is well beyond us. So, you know, fingers crossed. And if anybody believes in sending well wishes, that's the one you should be hoping for. So hopefully that'll change. And then the most updated thing, the Supreme Court decided today that OSHA can no longer enforce a mandate which requires employees of companies or schools over 100 employees to be vaccinated or test weekly. So we had originally started that when we saw that this was going through the courts, we suspended it to wait. And now it has been, you know, determined that that is not something that's going to be able to continue. Again, I will say we have a high number of our staff members that are vaccinated and that's great. And so we're, we're, and quite honestly, quite a few of our students and families. So that's really encouraging as well, especially as we're navigating Omicron. So.
Does that Supreme Court ruling, does that in any way affect what we do as a school in terms of testing or how we would, how we've been doing it or how we're going to do it going forward?
Not with testing. It was really specific to a mandate of requiring folks who had chosen not to be vaccinated to have to submit to weekly testing. And like I said, we did that early on. We had a very small number and, and several had moved towards vaccination. So we could choose to do differently. We probably will not at this point. I think people understand that they're making a choice and, and with the masking, it really doesn't affect exposure to other folks.
Okay, so for our numbers, Mecklenburg County is still currently under an indoor mask mandate. Our last full update for the county was on January 4th. And even though that seems very recent, considering how they're only going through a monthly reporting system. When you look at the numbers, it actually is drastically different than some of those, those data points show. So we, Mecklenburg County is still reporting. So the full update includes like hospitalizations, new COVID cases, vaccination rates and all those types of things. Mecklenburg County still does report the percent positive on a daily basis. Because if you remember back from our last update, the mask mandate tied to the county is dependent on five days, five consecutive, seven consecutive days, sorry. Seven consecutive days of a, a number that, that number percent positive.
a number that that number percent positive below a certain threshold. So they report that on a daily basis, there is a two-day lag for that. All county metrics on the January fourth update represent a rapid increase over the last fourteen days. New daily COVID cases on the January fourth update had a seven-day moving average of two thousand three hundred and fifteen compared to a hundred and seventy-four on November thirtieth, and that two thousand three hundred and fifteen, that was like four days of really high numbers, so when you look at the seven days, you had three, that's three days of lower numbers that actually brought that average down, so when you look at it, you know, now it would be substantially higher. Over the past seven days, on average, three hundred and seventy-four people were hospitalized, I looked at it again on another website, and it was close to five hundred, maybe last week. So that number is increasing and when you look at hospitalizations, that tends to be a lagging number. So as we see increases in cases and percent positive, the effects of that in hospitalizations probably won't be shown for another couple of weeks. So we can expect that number to probably be higher over the next couple of weeks. That compares to a hundred and fifty-five on November thirtieth, which was the last full county update. The next slide is the the percent positive graph that the county shows on a daily basis, as you can see, this was the week ending or the time period ending January ninth. The number ranged ranged from thirty point two percent to thirty seven point eight. I did look at it as of today, which I actually looked at it, it updates every morning at ten thirty, I looked at it before ten thirty when I when I got to the middle school this morning, and it dipped a little on January tenth, but I think it was like thirty six point something, so so while not an up, it was still pretty high up there. The CDC also is, you know, that we're looking at their, they do a county assessment, we're in the red. And then this is the vaccination numbers for Mecklenburg County. The the state officials, the Department of Health and Human Services still recommend those that are eligible to be vaccinated to get vaccinated. So just, I won't read through all of that, but that's kind of where we stand at this point. The next slide is our internal dashboard, which was updated on Wednesday. This is data through Sunday night, so that is January ninth at midnight, so I'm gonna let Ms. Shipman kind of go through that and anything else she might like to add.
Okay, so as anticipated, we do have a rise in our cases, which we can see as well as our exposures, which we can see on the dashboard. We know that this is related to the holiday break and winter break and travel. We also know that will have a ripple effect and we'll go on into our next dashboard, hopefully from there we will get some reprieve. That is my wish, so the numbers there, as you can see, those are reflected in the dates that Amy gave. Did want to give some clarification about that and several other things that we had talked about. I just wanna reiterate that, yes, if you are vaccinated and or boosted at eighteen or older, you are not considered exposed, however, if you have symptoms, we still want you to stay home. But just because you are not considered exposed by textbook does not mean your scenario or situation is not different, so we want you to stay home regardless. I wanted to speak to Craig and our team sports. One of the best things and the things that I find the most endearing about Lake Norman Charter is that we are a close-knit, small, family-type environment. And that means that not only are we together during school, we are also, our students are also together, and families and teachers and families are together outside of school when they might not mask the way that we require them to do here. And so while our sports teams may have needed to postpone their teams, it's not necessarily as it might appear from the outside, a sports spread, it is a spread from one person to another who may have very well and more than likely in most cases contracted COVID, contracted COVID or were exposed outside of the school setting. But I think it's important to recognize that and not to get that confused with school spread. With that, I also want to talk about the five-day quarantine that was also on our slide. It's important to know that we can't put every scenario on paper for people to look at. You can't just decide, oh, okay, I have COVID or I have exposure, it says stay out five days, I'm gonna stay out five days. I need you to know that that is basically where we're starting at, but you still need to seek guidance, and here's why, it sounds like five days. Onset of symptom or symptom or exposure day is day zero. From day zero, you move forward five days. After day five, you can return on day six, technically that's seven days, it gets quite confusing, so if you're not really reading into the literature, again, thank you for writing our toolkit for us, whoever does that. But that is how it is interpreted, and that is how it works, and that is why we want you to call and check in, and we want you to stay home until you receive guidance from us, we will excuse that. Your child will get, your student will get an opportunity to make up work, we would rather you stay home and keep us safe than come to school with improper guidance because it's very hard to interpret. The toolkit is available online, have a lot of people who call and ask questions that they could they don't understand why their student scenario is different than another student scenario, for the most part, people are very nice. They're very grateful for the guidance that they're getting. Sometimes people get frustrated and they are not very nice. And I would encourage you to, if you think you're being treated unfairly, check the toolkit and call me, I'll be happy to give you the guidance that you need as well as Nurse Denise. That is pretty much what I have, unless anybody else has any questions for me, again, I want to just one more thing. Reiterate that all of the numbers that you see are for percent positives only reflect P C R tests. Every home kit and every rapid test done by schools, providers, Star Med are not considered in that positivity rate. Also, we used to have that little thing where, you know, we were red, we were we were orange, we were green, we were yellow, they invented a new color for us, it's burgundy, the entire state of North Carolina is burgundy. The entire United States except for Maine is burgundy. Back to what Ms. Stein said about, we didn't say very enough times when we said it's very quick, maybe we'll get herd immunity. So I guess we'll be thankful that the symptoms are very mild, but because the symptoms are very mild, people oftentimes come to school thinking it's just allergies or just a headache, just call us and check, we're happy to give you the guidance. Any questions?
Just one quick one. The number of exposures is higher in elementary and middle, is that just because of vaccination rates or?
I think that is because of older siblings and we have a lot of parents in the home, and when you're in the home, the scenario changes a little bit and your exposure time changes a little bit too, depending on how you quarantine, masking and vaccination status.
So as you guys remember, we are required every month to continue to vote on our mask mandate, so as as you will see, the Safe Schools Committee can send you, could says that this is probably a good call, so we're recommending that we continue to mask, and we would need a motion and a vote for that.
I move that we continue masking. This is Nicole.
This is Richley, I'll second.
Alright, I'm just gonna jump to the motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you to everybody involved in safe schools to keep this thing afloat. What a mess we're dealing with, and I know it's a lot of work, it's not lost on me. So just thank you for all your hard work in keeping students in school. Alright, next up, Ms. Richley, global diversity and inclusion.
Yes, Happy New Year, everyone, and yes, thank you, especially Ms. Shipman for all you're doing to keep everything rolling, it's greatly appreciated. So G D and I was really excited to kick off twenty twenty-two with a letter that went out to all of the families, I hope that everyone had the opportunity to read that, I think it went out Tuesday, so if you haven't had the opportunity to look at it, check in your inbox in Tuesday's mail. We just wanted to take the opportunity to kick off the new year and kind of reiterate how we're trying to create an environment where all are respected and valued, and then also share with you what we're doing within the different schools and also what we're doing as a committee. We also invited all parents, you know, if they have any questions, to feel free to reach out to us. As we stated last year, we're really looking forward to working with parents and the different stakeholders. So I know my email is on the bottom of that letter, and I've had several parents reach out to me. And I wanted to thank them for taking the time to be interested in what we're doing with G D and I, and we had some great conversations. So again, we just encourage everyone to read the letter that was just sent out. So jumping back real quick to December, I don't know if you can go back a slide real quick to achievements in December. But let's see, do I have to move that or can you move that, Ms. Stein?
It's moved on this side, I I'm not sure why it's.
It's not moved on mine.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, so I'll just talk from my sheet. So looking back at December, which seems like ages ago, under our goal number one, which focuses on staff development, the survey was completed by all staff members with Nixon and Company. And also, all of the staff had the opportunity to really kind of be present as the students in the high school also did the microaggression session. So if you remember, we started the first microaggression module back in October, kind of partnering with Global Minds United, and then after the first module went out, realized that we really wanted to kind of take the time and take that information and really gear it more towards students and also teachers who had not gone through that training themselves. So sessions two through four were delivered in December, and it was a success. And what we're really trying to do with these microaggression sessions are build awareness, provide students with tools, and also give them the opportunity for self-reflection, the opportunity to also express their their own experiences and kind of use their voices to share what they've witnessed with others or what they've witnessed personally, either within the school or outside the school. And so to just give you an idea of how many students we had responding to these self-reflection questions, on each session, I think there were about five to six questions. And we had over four hundred students in the high schools respond. And which I've heard from a marketing individual, that if you send out a survey and you get over twenty percent responses, you're doing really, really well. So we're really proud of these students for taking the time to engage in these sessions and send us our feedback, and I will discuss a little bit kind of what we're doing in January with that feedback that we are getting. Also, in December, under student development, all three schools, the high school, the middle school and the elementary school all focused on holidays and world religions. And I just kind of wanted to share with you, it's kind of hard to read on the left-hand side of your slide, but it says, why do I say happy holidays? Because from the first of November to the fifteenth of January, there are approximately twenty-nine holidays observed by seven of the world's major religions, and I don't think mine are the only ones that count. And so we had some of our high school students in the diversity club share with us that over the month of December, they were not only looking at Hanukkah, Christianity, Kwanzaa, but they were also looking at some other world religions that are not really talked about as much, and not only were they talking about them, building awareness through passing out flyers, but they were also creating awareness around food, and we saw that in all three schools where there wasn't just a focus on the religion itself, but there was a focus on the culture in which that religion resided. So kind of looking more in-depthly at culture and religion. I also wanted to share with you that several students, teachers in the elementary school shared with me that when they were celebrating Diwali, that they had numerous families reach out to them and say that their children came home and were so excited to hear the the teachers talking about Diwali and for the opportunity to share with their classmates what they do in their own homes. So again, we're seeing this opportunity for individuals to share their own religious beliefs and holidays, but then to also be on the receiving end and learn from others. Also, under goal three, in December, we are reevaluating the G D and I mission statement and also started our review of data from the first couple microaggression sessions. So if we can go ahead and go on to January. So I was just given information that the evaluation of the results from the Nixon and Company staff survey are to be coming in in January. And there's gonna be a review of those results, and then a determination of the direction of where programming for the staff will go in the future, and also its relations in terms of finances. So as soon as I get that information from Shannon, as well as our other leaders in the G D and I, we'll be able to share that with you in February or March. In terms of the high school coming up in January, and also the middle school and elementary school, they are celebrating Martin Luther King Junior and also Asian heritage. And in the middle school in, under digital citizenship, the eighth graders will be looking at implicit bias. We talk a lot about implicit bias and unconscious bias, these are associations and preferences. Unconscious bias refers to an individual's bias, and then implicit bias refers to in a bias that resides in the system, so they were looking at media bias. And then in the elementary school, on January twenty-fourth, they will be starting passports around the world. Under goal three, we are continuing to reevaluate the G D and I mission statement. As I said, we started that in December and are also following that up in our January committee meeting, and we'll be sharing that with you as we move forward. Also, we are continuing our commitment to communication with all stakeholders. As you saw, in this month, we did our letter out to all of the families in Knights News, encouraging them to reach out to us with any questions, or if they just wanted to get involved. Also, under goal three, we are gonna really be taking a deep dive into the evaluation of all of the responses that we got from the students, if you think about it, we had over four hundred students respond. Each one of those students answered five questions, so we're looking at a lot of answers, and we're gonna be talking about that as a committee. And then for February's meeting, we're gonna be putting together a special report for you, so you can see all four of the modules. Understand what each of those modules focused on. You'll also have the ability to hear a podcast where some students read off not their own responses, but responses that were submitted by other students, and we'll also prevent, present to you a report with the student feedback as well as, you know, where we go from here. Are there any questions?
No questions on this side, thank you, Ms. Rachel.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have Thrive Updates.
I could probably do it from memory if you needed me to. So for January, we have been able to finalize our student survey, we were fleshing that out last month, just kind of tweaking things. So now we're at the point we have. Um, so now we're at the point, we have, uh, two different surveys, one for the ninth through 12th grade students and then a shortened version, slightly shortened version for seventh and eighth grade students. So we'll be coordinating, getting, rolling that out, um, and getting, um, looking forward to seeing the information that that brings. And then the committee will be meeting with Brian Boon, Boon, excuse me, our consultant, um, looking like either Thursday or Friday next week. Um, we have a doodle poll out there and, um, I think those were the popular days. So we're going to get that solidified and meet with him just kind of on overall, um, you know, as we've started, um, data collection and we have some information, um, how do we take that? And what, you know, on a broader view, what's the vision and, and long-term goals? Hopefully start shape some of those. So look forward to hopefully a media report in February.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carr. All right, next up, we have, uh, dress code policy revision updates. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thanks, Rick. Um, so I want to start off by thanking the committee and their hard work in putting this proposal together. Again, the committee was made up of the assistant principals and counselors at all of our campuses. So Ms. Riggins, Ms. Fish, Ms. Frigowski, Mr. Mavady, Mr. Funches, Ms. Latz, Latz, uh, also had, uh, Mrs. Overdy from the board and Mrs. Stein as superintendent. Um, I've, I've talked a bit about the process before, but since we have a policy in place, it probably makes sense to, to go back through how we got here. Um, we started working as a committee, I guess, back in September and we really, um, we met, uh, started from scratch. We didn't look at any piece of paper. We really tried to talk about what we wanted from a policy, how address, why we need a dress code policy, if we need a dress code policy, how it fits into our mission at the charter school. And we used that time to, to really come up with the aims for any dress code policy. And that, that you can, you can see those aims really in the first page of the, the policy, which is the statement of purpose. And, and really for the most part, we want to, like with every other policy and, and like the mission of charter itself, we want to make sure we're creating safe schools where students can learn, where students are in the classroom, where they're free from intimidation or any hostility and that everybody's being treated equitably. And so those are the overriding goals of the policy that we put into place. And so after, after that, the goal is to come up with wording that, uh, that adheres to these aims. So again, we met, um, we talked about a variety of, of options and best practices. Um, we talked about issues that we've seen the other schools, you know, some schools have uniforms, the issues related to that. Um, some schools have pretty conservative dress codes, the issues related to that. Um, we looked at dress codes from both large and small public schools, from private schools, from, uh, other charter schools, um, around the country and, um, used that to come up with, uh, a policy that we again thought was in line with the aims that we set out originally. That policy was sent out to our stakeholders at the end of December, right before Christmas. Uh, we got tremendous feedback from our parents and from our staff and our teachers. And I really appreciate everybody that took the time to, uh, to give their comments. We, as a committee, met after that, uh, early there, this month to go through those comments to see what improvements, if any, we should make to the policy. Um, and we did, we did make some tweaks and changes because, um, you know, people have different perspectives and we, as a committee, are opening to listen to other opinions. And so what we have in front of you today is our final proposal for the dress code policy. It's really, if you go to the next page, I will read it, but, um, ultimately it, um, uh, again, I think it aligns with, with what we started out to do. It, uh, requires the basic principles that require, um, certain body parts to be covered. Uh, there are certain, you know, the way it's set up, it's what you have to wear, what you can wear and what you can't wear. Um, again, this is a policy that is campus-wide, K through 12. Uh, we think it'll hopefully help avoid, um, any confusion that's been in place. Historically, we know a lot of folks have worked on dress code over the years and, and a lot of good work has been put in. Um, not only by this committee, but by, uh, prior committees. And we, and we did rely on, on some of that work when we're putting this together. And so, um, you know, we hope this is a policy that gets everybody, um, in a place where dress code is no longer an issue and kids can be in the classroom and learn. But we also recognize that, it will take time for people to get used to. And so we are proposing that we adopt this, that the board adopt this policy. But we also recognize that it's gonna, you know, we need to look at it and who knows what we're, where we may be in a few months, but we think we should, we should do this now and, and, and keep a, a steady eye on it and make sure it's being adopted and being enforced in a way that, uh, that is fair and equitable to everyone. Anyone have any questions?
So just for clarity, Mr. Kilpatrick, are, is the proposal that this is implemented immediately as a pilot and then fully adopted as part of our normal handling process or what is, what, what does that look like?
So, uh, uh, my understanding is that's not possible, that from a policy standpoint, we need to adopt it so it's, it becomes enforceable and part of the student handbook. But if, otherwise, I don't know if it's an actual enforceable policy from a handbook standpoint. So that would be my only concern, that we put it in place as some sort of pilot, but it wouldn't really have any teeth to it because it's not an official.
Okay, so, so in other words, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, but, but then the commitment is, is that this board and maybe that committee will.
Will look at it.
Look at it again.
Maybe at the end of the semester to make sure, yeah, we'll, we'll keep in touch with, you know, all the schools and at the end of the semester, we'll meet again as a committee to see if we think we've done what we needed to do to accomplish the goal.
Thank you.
And Greg, it's Elizabeth. I, I only had one question. I can't see the particular section on the screen right now, but I, I noted that there was a, a typo in the bullet point about hoods. And so I just wanted to make sure that just that typo was fixed before it got put implemented, if we're going to take a vote on it today. Students may not put the hood of on, wait, wait, you just passed it. Student. It's down under subpart A. Further, further, further.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get you. The lettering is off on this, so we'll.
It's, yeah, students may not put the hood of on any piece of, it's just, yeah.
I think on is, we delete on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that's corrected.
Any other questions or comments?
Did the, the, I read through the enforcement. I'm not, I don't know that I was totally, um, familiar with the previous enforcement. Has that changed at all or is that still?
So from a. It, it is, it is cons- well, a few things. Enforcement itself is a, is not truly embedded in the policy. You know, it's up to the administrative administration staff to enforce every policy for the school. Um, we do have, um, some language in here that's consistent with what was in the previous policy of, you're asked to remove clothing that violates the policy or, or find, um, additional clothing to put on. But the repercussions of violating the policy and how it's enforced is done at, at the administrative level.
Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, if, if we vote to approve tonight, are we saying this implements a change tomorrow? Or does that have to be put into the handbook, once it's in the handbook? It's, um.
As soon as you guys approve it, it is, it is effective immediately and it will, once I make the hood change, it will go into the handbook.
And, and.
And we'll put an updated handbook on the webpage and this will be sent out as part of the communication that will be going out to our families, probably right after the holiday break. So, um, Sarah and her team will have a chance to put together a good comprehensive thing. So families will be aware.
I have a quick question. I don't, um, I don't know, Greg, if there's any, like, a couple of high-level things that, of feedback that you heard from families that would be worth sharing. And I'm also curious, just like from Shannon and the principals, is this enforceable? Do you feel like it's, is it clear? Is it?
So.
Is it going to be helpful to not continue to, you know, take administrative time when we have a lot of things that we're dealing with?
So I'll, I'll, I'll let Shannon answer most of our questions, but that, that was, um, one of the large, one of the aims that the committee had was that there was a lot of time being spent by, um, the vice principals and other teachers and, and members of staff dealing with, um, this, this policy and dress code as opposed to and so the hope and goal is that it is clear and it more, it's easier to enforce and there'd be less, um, issues around it.
I think actually that might be more of a building level, um, principal question. I guess one thing I would just like to ask the board is that, um, while this is fairly consistent with what some of the buildings were doing, it is a big change for some of the other buildings. And so, um, I think the, the best thing to answer is that, that is the sincerest hope. There was a lot of discussion around that. And I think the committee had every intention of trying to make that be the case. With that being said, like anything, and, and that's why I asked about the pilot was, you know, sometimes you, you have unintended consequences. And I, you know, can't foresee those. I, I think the committee did their due diligence. They looked at a lot of other schools and their success rate. And I think that is, is what the hope is going to be. But I, I do think it's important that we revisit that to make sure that that is exactly what happened, um, once it was implemented.
And as far as parent feedback or things we got from stakeholders, I mean, there, there were, uh, consistent messages around being like everything else that happens in society. I think there are people on various sides of, of, of particular issues. But there were folks that were, um, excited about the fact that, um, that they saw it as more equitable, equitable, more, uh, gender neutral. There are other folks that, that, um, were concerned about um, the lack of specificity when it comes to the certain things and, and other areas. And so, um, you know, again, it's, it's, we, we hope it's clear. We hope it's a, a policy that's easy, more, more easily enforced. But again, we'll, we, we also understand that we'll have to see how, how it goes and make tweaks on it.
I have a quick question. Um, how, how is this information being disseminated to staff so that they understand? Because they weren't, because it does seem like it's going to be quite a difference, um, for the middle school. And so how things that they maybe wouldn't have, that wouldn't have been, a lot of things that wouldn't have been okay before are, are now okay. How, how are we going to make sure that that culture of enforcement is implemented?
Um, so the, the staff was, uh, just like all the staff, it had an opportunity to see the draft. Um, so they are aware of what was in that and their, I would say, not surprisingly, the most significant feedback came from the middle school staff because as, as you alluded to, Nicole, that is going to be, um, a large change for them. And, you know, when, when this is done, whenever we send communications out to our families, they first go to our staff. So they're, they're aware that the discussion was going to be happening tonight. And, um, I'm sure there will be follow-up questions that will come to the administration, um, because, because of it being a change. And, um, you know, certainly we will be prepared to, to answer those. And, um, you know, I, I again, just want to recognize that this is the biggest change for them. And all of the feedback that was given, I believe the committee gave a lot of, um, thought to in trying to balance across all three campuses. Um, but we do need to make sure again that it's going to do what it is intended to do. And I think it's wise and I appreciate the, the board recognizing that, um, that's something that we're going to need to monitor. And, um, we'll be coming back to if those intentions are not the way that we had hoped to. Because then you have data. Sometimes we're, we have concerns or reservations about things that we're not sure because we, we're not sure which way they're going to go. And I understand that and, um, quite honestly, support that because it's hard to predict. But, but this is an opportunity for us to try that, make sure it's communicated to them, answer questions and then really see what the effect is going to be.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, uh, let's see, all those in favor? Or actually, sorry, good catch. Is there a motion first?
I'm, I'm moving that we approve the new, uh, dress code policy.
This is Leslie, I second.
All right, now, any other questions or further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to the, uh, the committee that Greg referenced earlier for the, the work on this. Um, really appreciated. And as, uh, the conversation indicated, it's just a thing like many other policies that we'll keep our eyes on to make sure that we're meeting the goals. Okay, next up, um, no new business, so check that one off. All right, so we will need a motion to move into closed session. And it, it does have to be precise.
All right, that, I'll, I'll take a bite. Uh, this is Amy. I move that we move to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143 dash 318 dot 11A6.
This is Elizabeth, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. We are in closed session. Thank you.
Elizabeth.